Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call it order the regular meeting of the Chicopee School Committee.
Recording in progress.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and with this long, full liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with open meeting laws, we are right now live broadcasting and recording this meeting. And at this time, I'd like to observe a moment of silence for those who serve in the military and for all of those who help to protect us. Thank you. Sarah, may I have a roll call?
Mayor View?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Barcello?
Mr. DePaola?
Here.
Mrs. Parrett?
Present.
Mrs. Scofield?
Here.
Mr. Shumsky?
Here.
Mr. Lamoth?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Here.
Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Ms. Lopes? Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Ten present, two absent.
Thank you. Public announcements by committee members. We can start to my left.
Yes, I'd like to remind the public to pay attention to the school buses. The kids are back in school. And when the red lights are on, please stop. We don't need any accidents. Thank you.
Thank you. Grace?
Yes, I'd like to give a shout out to the administrative team for probably the best convocation that I've ever attended in over 26 years, both at Bellamy. I received many, much feedback from teachers and the student speakers were phenomenal speakers. And Jerry Brooks gave an address to the public there, well, no, excuse me, the staff, that delivered a message about school climate and accepting others' differences and showing dignity. And you could hear a pin drop in that auditorium. And it was laughter and, excuse me, humor. And it was just kudos to the administrative team for a job well done.
Thank you. Sam?
Yes, I just want to say welcome back to all the teachers, students, and staff. And we're hoping for a successful school year this year. And I also want to give an update on Moro Drive Oko Circle traffic study that I asked for. I did talk to Vice President Bob Zgarowski of the City Council, and we are scheduling a meeting for sometime either at the end of September or the beginning of October in relations to that proposal to help with traffic. So that's it for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Chet?
I'm all set.
Thank you. We'll go to my right. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to echo my colleague's comment. I too would like to welcome back all the students and staff. I hope working together, we can have a successful 2022-2023 school year. And I'd also like to wish the best of luck to all our student athletes in their fall seasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Sandra?
Welcome back to everyone for the school year, to the teachers, paraprofessionals, administrative assistants, everyone involved in the education of our children. Thank you to the custodial department for ensuring that our schools opened as beautiful as they always are. So thank you so much for creating that wonderful atmosphere for everyone. Welcome back and enjoy the year.
Thank you. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to also echo the sentiments of my colleagues and welcome all of our students and staff back for a new school year. I'd just like to remind everybody as well, when you're on the road at the beginning or end of a school day, please just go at a reasonable speed. I live right up the street from Bellamy Middle School, and I can't tell you how many people end up speeding through these side streets and going up and down that hill. So I just want everyone to stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Salaam.
All set, Mayor. Thank you.
And Ron?
I don't want to repeat what all my colleagues said, so that's what happens when you go last. So I'm all set.
You want to echo the same sentiments as your colleagues?
I'm sorry?
You want to echo the same sentiments?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Before we hear from the superintendent, I too wanted to welcome back first our teacher, staff, and administration for hopefully a very successful 2022-2023 school year. I had the opportunity to speak to our 65 new teachers, and I can tell you that it was very exciting to see people joining our district. And the morale and the camaraderie of that group was very impressive. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to recognize our administration for the convocation that was put on. It certainly was, Grace, second to none. Jerry Brooks was incredible. He almost motivated me to want to be a teacher. And I can tell you that some of the things that he brought forward really resonated with me in not just my life, but also here as the mayor of the city of Chicopee. So we're really excited about the school year. I know that we want to talk a little bit about school safety. And I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to recognize our maintenance staff too, Scott Chapdolane, getting our schools ready in a timely manner and making sure that we're providing those safe, comfortable learning environments that everyone expects from the city of Chicopee School District. On that note, I'll turn it over to the interim superintendent, Alvin Morton, for his comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I too just want to welcome everybody back, students and staff, for the 2022-2023 school year. Yes, the convocation was one of the more interesting events this year. Jerry Brooks did give an inspiring speech, and I think we had some activities that really got staff inspired and hope we can carry this momentum throughout the whole school year. So we also are still in the process of hiring too. So to date, we've hired 80 new teachers, 31 new pairs, and 21 subs. So if you know anybody, please tell them to look on School Spring or look, you know, the College of Chicopee Public Schools, look on the website. We're still looking for some open positions, but we're off to a pretty good start of the school year. Not many hiccups, had a little bit of hiccups, but it's been a very successful start of the school year. And I wish everybody a successful 2022-2023 school year. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public input. It looks like we don't have anyone, Sarah, signed up for public input. So we can move on to our visitors. Today, our visitors, we're going to talk about school safety. We have Chief Major from the Chicopee Police Department and Chief Stamboreski from the Chicopee Fire Department. Welcome to the school committee meeting, gentlemen. We're interested in hearing your presentation on school safety. And I know that the interim superintendent would also like to elaborate and collaborate with your efforts. So please feel free to join us at any microphone. I will say, before we get started, I think this is a very important topic that needs to be addressed. And we want to make sure that our district is safe and certainly do everything in our power to give you the tools you need to implement those policies, procedures, and guidelines that I'm sure you're going to talk about. So Chief, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I have a couple of topics to talk about that relate to school safety. One of it is traffic related. And I've heard numerous concerns throughout the city about traffic, about speeding, stop sign violations. And we have been addressing that. I've had overtime shifts out there working specifically in the school neighborhoods for the last few weeks, before school and after school, to try and do some education and enforcement for the people that are coming or dropping off students, or even if they're just in the neighborhood. We want to make sure that the students and the buses are safe getting in and out of the schools. The second topic, obviously, the main reason why I'm here is what are we doing for school safety as far as the police department is concerned? Since 2017, I've been working with Mr. Morton on the school safety program. And we collaborated with the state police and brought the enhanced lockdown program into Chicopee. It's the same program that's offered throughout many cities and towns in Western Mass through a joint collaboration with the state police. And basically, what it is, is training on what to do in the event of a hostile intruder, active shooter, or also for shelter in place for weather-related emergencies or medical emergencies in the school. That training has been well received by the staff at the school. And we've also been able to incorporate some actual live drills over the last couple of years, which have been offered during PD training days for the school staff. Those have also been very well received by the people that have attended it. The collaboration has also given us valuable training to work alongside the fire department, setting up a joint unified response to this type of event, see where we are, what we need to do better. And go along the lines of that, the state recently adopted, this is the NFPA, I believe it's National Fire Protection Association 3000. It's the standard for active shooter hostile event response program. So this is going to be the go-to standard for the state. Basically, what it is, is what we're already doing, but setting it in stone as a statewide standard. If you like, I can pass this book along if you all want to briefly take a look. So the concerns, obviously, the nature of school shootings around the country always has us on guard to how can we better prepare for an event like that. And again, working along with Mr. Chapdolane and Chief Stamboreski, we've come a long way from where we were as far as preparedness. I think the school resource officers we have in the school are highly trained, highly motivated, ready to respond to any hostile event that's going to happen in the school. We also, through Mr. Morton and Sheriff Kochi, have two deputies assigned to the district as attendance officers, and they're ready to respond as well should any hostile events happen. What I've been doing with the amount of new personnel that we, as a police department, have had is trying to get them more acclimated. So as part of their field training program, their field training officers do bring them around to the schools to get them in there to take a look at the different areas of the schools. So that way, if something does happen, God forbid, they're not going into an environment that they don't know. That's one of the biggest training points that we have is being prepared as much as possible so that if an event does happen, we're not going into it cold. That's something that we stress our training department has been working on that over the course of the years. Our department offers various types of active shooter training, whether it's with the school or during our own in-house training. And that is going to be a part of this year's in-house training as well. Any questions?
Yes.
So back in 2018, I was a senior, it was my first day. I remember we had a lockdown. We had a lockdown, and I believe Tim was there too, when we were escorted out of the building by the police. And they did a phenomenal job that day, making sure that we were all safe. What protocols have we implemented since then to make sure that that never happens again?
I guess the question is, so what not happened?
What has changed since 2018?
I think we've just trained more and got people more acclimated. I mean, that lockdown was called because of a situation that there was a threat in the school. So obviously, we went into lockdown and followed the process. So obviously, you know, I guess the biggest change we've had since 17, and Chief Major can talk about this too, we at one point in time used to use colors. Used to have red, blue, green, gray. Now we use plain language for visitors in the building. So now we have lockdown, shelter in place, severe weather. But the reason the comp situation was because there was a threat in the school and obviously went into lockdown and followed the process that we had trained the years before. So we started the training, the enhanced lockdown training that the chief had talked about. But that's similar to ALICE, which is alert, locate, inform, counter, or evade. And that's basically what the enhanced state police lockdown training is. And we've trained all staff on that. So I think the more, we've trained more since then, I think we had a slow to crawl. I think COVID kind of pushed us behind a little bit because I think we were ahead of the curve with getting everybody trained. And we were going into reunification drills, which is the next thing on our list to try to get re-acclimated people back to reunification. But we've been training on lockdown procedures since 17 on a more frequent basis. You're going to get, you know, two to three lockdown drills throughout the year. You'll get canine searches throughout the year, which we go into lockdown. You'll get shelter in place drills through any type of medical thing. So I think we were pretty prepared on those type of situations. It's now now to try to make our, you know, our perimeter a little bit more safe, to try to be on the preventative end from that standpoint because we try to operate from prevention and mitigation to planning and preparation to response and recovery. So we're trying to make sure we can prevent it and mitigate it on the front end of it before we have to get to, you know, any type of response.
Awesome. Thank you.
If I could add on to what Mr. Morton said also, we did learn some lessons that day. It came, obviously, at probably the worst time of the day, the end of the school day, when people were there already to pick up their students. So right there, it added a high level of anxiety for everybody responding. The amount of officers that our department had there, as well as other neighboring departments, to include state and federal agencies, was in excess of 100 that day. And the coordination of it actually went very well. Anytime there's a situation like that, it's going to be hectic, it's going to be chaotic, but we managed it extremely well. There were some things we did note as far as the evacuation and relocation. Putting 1,200-plus students from a high school into a small elementary school, we found wasn't necessarily the best logistical thing to do. So Mr. Morton and I have talked along the way, and we've discovered that we can use some supersites throughout the city. So if we needed to relocate people again, we could, excuse me, use one of those supersites and not have to put them into a very small location.
Questions, Don?
With an active shooter on site, the, I would assume the principal would be the incident commander until he was relieved. At that point, would it be the resource officer or would he be in charge until?
For, if there's a hostile event going on at the location, it would be an officer in charge, would be the incident commander overall.
But if you're at an elementary and there's no officer, who takes control until the officer gets there?
Well, if there's a hostile event going down, then I'd hope that everybody would either be locked down, so they're not going to be available to be an incident commander, or they would have egressed the building to a safe location.
Okay.
The goal is to get us in there to stop that threat.
Okay.
That's first and foremost. So once that happens, we go in there, we realize that the threat has been neutralized. Then by that time, additional resources have arrived, and we have set up a temporary incident command. And that could be anybody. That could be anyone from our department. And as others arrive of higher rank or higher training, they will assume command. And then after a while, once it gets into a time where we have a secure area set up, then we have a joint command with the fire department, and we work to get injured persons out of the building that way. The time that the school staff would probably come back into the loop of incident command would be during a reunification. You have all the information pertinent to reunification, the students, their names, their grades, persons who are responsible for picking them up. That's where we would expect you to kind of take command at that point.
The reason why I ask the question is because down in Uvalde, they had an officer on site, and he, not me.
Yeah, I understand.
I don't want to be that way.
We've all seen what happened down there. I don't want to be critical. I have my own personal views of that. And that's not what we train.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sure, we'll go Doug and then Sandra.
Chief, how long is this program with the state? How new is this? Has it been around for a while or?
We got on board with it. Are you talking to one that I passed out recently? This has just come out recently. I know they just signed it that that's going to be our standard probably within the last few weeks.
Well, I think that's a tremendous idea, that we can look at other districts and, God forbid, I mean, school safety is certainly the most important, you know, keeping our students safe and our staff safe. You know, if it happens one time, it's one too many. And, you know, something may happen out in, you know, a different area where, you know, we can work and we can figure out how, you know, hopefully, we could stop this, you know, from happening again. So I love to see, you know, districts and having this program working together. You know, it's impossible for you and your staff to, you know, come up with every scenario that could possibly happen. So if we learn one thing from one of these districts, I mean, it's just a home run. So I'm very, very happy to see this taking place.
I've had the opportunity to go to South Hadley Schools, to go out to Long Meadow Schools, Southwick Schools. Like I said, we all take part in the enhanced lockdown program that the state brought in. So to see it put in place in other districts, like you mentioned, it kind of gives me an eased feeling, knowing that if these other districts have to come here to assist us, they already know what we're going to be doing. And likewise, if we go there, they know what to expect from us as well. One further thing to add is Mr. Morton mentioned before, prevention. So I know that the school does a lot as far as mental health resources and kind of doing threat assessment. And we also have, one of our newer SROs is going to be attending a behavioral threat assessment class as well. So just another tool to have in the toolbox. Obviously, if we can see something that's happening beforehand and get person services that they need, or stop it before something happens, that's definitely our goal.
Well done. Thank you. Thank you, Sandra.
Just in considering the buildings that we have and the size of them and the many entrances to enter and exit, is it customary and do we in our district have, are the doors labeled on the outside so someone, like the police department needing to get in when you're communicating, should something happen, that they would know which way to go? Are our doors, I just never noticed?
Yeah, our doors are labeled.
On the outside?
Right.
Okay, thank you. And then in this plan, there's also a plan to communicate with parents and guardians, things that are happening, or what, to calm them because no doubt, you know?
Yes, our public information officer would be working with the administration for any type of event, even if it's a shelter in place happens. Mr. Morton and I have discussed that in the past. We want to make sure that the message going out is the same, so there's no confusion.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All set. Tim?
Thank you. I know that you said a number of communities have signed on to this new program. In Hampden County, do you happen to know how many other communities have done so?
I don't know the exact number, sir, but like I said, I've worked with South Hadley. I've worked with Long Meadow, Southwick. I believe Holyoke also is on board. I've gone over there to help them as well during some of their trainings and lockdown drills.
Anyone else with any questions or comments? Well, first, I want to thank you, Chief, for taking time out of your busy schedule. Oh, I'm sorry, Chet has a question.
If I could, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
In terms of community, in terms of retention and recruitment, with all the publicity out there, are things, the numbers?
Yes, things are looking up. Thanks to the mayor and the city council, we were able to achieve somewhat pay parity with other departments, which was an issue in the past, where we were losing some of our talent to other departments, where people were leaving to go get higher pay. But the last contract that was negotiated brought us up to a level that was on par with some of our neighboring communities. And we've been fortunate enough, again, thanks to the mayor and the city council, they've pretty much agreed with my request for adding more staff members, where we can get up to a level that's close to our full complement. And hopefully, that'll be achieved early next year.
That's good news.
It is. Very good news for us.
No, one thing I can say is that the chief prides himself in training, and the police department here in the city of Chicopee really wants to do everything in their power to make sure that they have the tools, and I'm committed to that as well as mayor of the city, that they have the tools they need to keep themselves safe and also to protect our community. So I think that for the first time, you're going to see, and we've already experienced it at a small scale, where police officers are considering transferring over to the city of Chicopee, Chet, because certainly, we pride ourself in the police work that we do. And I'm really thankful for the chief. And I've given him the opportunity to implement the vision that he has to keep this city safe. So thank you, Chief, for your commitment and what you're doing to keep our community safe. Thank you. Anything else?
Your presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for that presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us this evening. From the fire department standpoint, I'd like to back up a little bit to the history of this whole thing. Chief Major and I, prior to being chiefs, did some training together that was phenomenal with FEMA put on a class in West Springfield. We learned quite a bit about this NFPA 3000 standard that back then was just a thought, and it hadn't been implemented yet. So probably three years ago, the city council approved all the equipment for the fire department, which we didn't have prior, that being ballistic vests, helmets, additional jump kits, wound care, and so forth. And they are placed on every apparatus in the city, as well as the ambulances. And that was huge for us, but it was a dramatic change. It's a culture change. We were never trained to go into a building where there was a shooter. And this is something that, countrywide, they've been trying to change. And we gradually have been changing that culture. And that's what's so important about us working together. And I think both departments have been doing an amazing job at breaking down that particular part of the culture of us not going in. Some of the prior chiefs weren't on board with that. So as Chief Major was saying, basically, their job is security. They go in and they try and secure the threat. And then what we do from that point is we establish a unified command outside of the building between the two agencies. And as the chief was saying, it could be the first most senior officer of each crew, PD and fire, that show up. They join a unified command outside of the building in a safe zone. They have radio communications inside and outside, and that progressively gets bigger as the deputies, captains, chiefs end up showing up on scene. And we start delegating responsibilities out. So we've been doing some training for the last couple of years, and we're discussing trying to expand that even further and doing more than one large training session a year. We're going to start implementing tabletop exercises to choose a different building each time. This year's training was over at the Schuennigan Drive Building, which is West Combs Regional Dispatch Center. They're going to be there in the future. We've also involved them because they're a big player in this. We have to, they go to training for dispatch training for this type of event, too. They dedicated two dispatchers that day to the event. And we're working together, all three of our departments currently, to utilize our training room for an emergency operations center, not only for an event like this, but you mentioned storms and lockdowns for storms and so forth. The reason for that is it becomes overwhelming for the dispatch center. They have X amount of staff, just like we do. But when something expands this big, we're preparing for it. We've got laptops purchased and we're going to take that training center and expand out so that Westcom could bring in some additional help for all the phone calls that'll be flooding and they get overwhelmed quickly. So those are most of the points that I wanted to, to mention about this particular type of active shooter incident. I, I spoke to fire prevention officers a couple of days ago in anticipation of this meeting and I said, hey, is there anything that you wanted me to bring up? And a lot of you, if you've been around for a long time, fire drills are nothing new to you, but sometimes they get annoyed with us. And I want to let you know that we're not there to try and disrupt your first few days of school. This is state law and we have to do it within the first three days. This is why we're pestering you on those first three days. So we appreciate your patience with us on that. And they also mentioned, one of the key things for safety, we hope to never have a fire in the schools, but we have had a couple minor ones fortunately, but a lot of the doors, they're designed, every, every alarm system's a little bit different. Some of the buildings are older, some of them are newer, but some of the doors you'll notice in the hallways are magnetically kept open. And the reasoning for that is if there is a fire, the alarm system automatically releases that magnet, closes the doors and it compartmentalizes smoke and/or fire in a certain area. That doesn't mean you can't still use them and pass through them, but it's, it's done for a purpose. So if we just urge you to not wedge any of these doors open because it would defeat the purpose. The other thing that they wanted me to mention was some of it seems to be common sense, but just keeping the entry doors into the classrooms free and clear of any obstacles and also the transition doors in between classrooms, sometimes that's forgotten. And when they do their inspections, that's very important too for evacuation, not only for a fire, but you know, a situation like this. So that's about all I had from the fire side, but I welcome any questions, if anybody has any.
Any questions? From anyone? Comments?
I can just add to the chief's, chief's piece that from the joint training you all had, it reminded us that we want to go back to stop the bleed. It's probably something we need to get into all our schools with the CAT Ts and the SWAT Ts for the tourniquets to add to our go bags. We have go bags in every classroom. So that was something that you're, the joint training between the police department and the fire department. And one of the parts they were showing them, the CAT Ts and SWAT T tourniquets. And that's not just something good for schools and lockdowns, but it's good, you know, just know for your own kids on the playground or anything like that. So we're looking into the CAT Ts and the SWAT Ts also too. So that was a good, good to go over and see that training that afternoon.
Alan, that's a great comment. And we have four individuals on my department. Two of them are combat medics and two of them are paramedics, so a little higher level training. And they're more than willing to share that knowledge and it could be a vital component, you know, while you're waiting for the building to be cleared or for us to get to, to you. I mean, that would be a tremendous thing and we'd work together with you anytime you want to put on some of those classes.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. I just have a comment, Chief. You know, I've been on the scene of a fire or an accident and I've seen your, your, your staff communicate, you know, whether it's through the radio, most of the time it's through that. And I'm just amazed at how organized, you know, and how vital it is to communicate in such a quick period of time. And, you know, sometimes being trained and set up for that communication ultimately can save lives because, you know, you are under the gun. So, you know, when you think of something bad happening with the schools, with someone coming in, you know, you, you think it's more of a, a police department issue, but I understand now, you know, you guys would communicate and, and kind of be like a quarterback out there to, you know, ultimately try to keep everybody safe. So the more training and, and that we can do is just, you know, tremendous.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from anyone? Questions?
Just one more.
Sure, Chet, go ahead.
I'm sorry. Relative to false alarms, is that a big issue?
Most of the time, they're not continual. Certainly that, you know, it's electronic devices, they're pretty complex systems. Scott Chapdeline's amazing whenever he gets anything at the schools. He either responds or sends somebody out to, to help with the problem and then we give him a certain amount of time to fix the problem. But, you know, some, some businesses, a couple vacant buildings, sometimes it's a nuisance where, where they're multiple times, but it could be anything from moisture to a spider in a detector or something. But I don't, it, it's not a big problem. We, we respond and handle them okay.
Thank you for sharing. You're welcome. Any other comments? I just want to take a moment to recognize Chief Sam Borski in the fire department. I'll tell you, public safety is paramount to the success of any community and kudos to you. I can tell you during promotional opportunities, I saw firsthand how important training is to every firefighter. And I can say we have a lot of talent on our staff and we actually have many who are involved with the regional training facility right here in Springfield. They're the training officers that are working with new firefighters every day. And training is something that they take very seriously and they're constantly improving the way they do things. And, and please let the public safety team know that I appreciate all of their hard work and commitment. And, and certainly it's, it's same as it was for the police department. We want to make sure that the fire department has the tools they need to keep not only themselves safe, but to protect this community. So thank you, Chief, for this presentation and thank you, Chief Major as well. And I, I'd be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to again, thank Mr. Chapdeline for, again, it's the environment that these kids are learning in. So we want to provide safe, comfortable learning environments for, for every student. We want everyone to feel comfortable in our school district and we take that very seriously. And that's the reason why we wanted to have you as visitors today. So thank you for those presentations. Grace, anything you'd like to add?
Yes, to echo your thanks, but when you were speaking about their safety as firefighters too, it kind of jogged my memory. Being a native of Worcester, I had relatives involved with the Worcester warehouse fire. And I, one of the things that I know that came out of that was thermal imaging machine. I know you were mentioning things that we had, that you have, but does Chicopee have thermal imaging machines?
Yeah, fortunately we have quite a few. The city had paid for a few initially and then we got some grant money to acquire several more throughout the years. So we're in good shape in that regard. Thank you.
That's good, Chief. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else anyone would like to add? Sandra.
I guess it's just a, a basic thought is that each one of us, you know, all the preparation that, that is being done, but we all need to be alert of our surroundings and be conscious of, of what's happening around us. And if there's ever any question and any doubt in our mind that something doesn't seem right, that we should bring it forward to, to the principal in the building or whatever. Just, just sadly, we all have to be aware.
Right. Report anything that's not, that's out of the ordinary is really the message. And some people use the cliche, see, see something, say something. And I think that can go a long way. So thank you for that comment because I think it means a lot. Anything else that anyone would like to add? Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen for being here. Sure. Our facilities director, Scott Chapdeline, would like to say a few words.
I didn't, I didn't plan on talking, but there's a couple of points I want to make, to make everyone aware of. A couple of things the chiefs did not mention. The fire profession and building department go through our bill, our, every school, every, every year at the beginning of the school year, we usually wait until school starts up so the, we can see how the teachers have the rooms set up, see they have extension cords out, see how everything's running in the school. We don't want to do it in the summer, we want to do it when the school's up and running. Fire profession and building department check every single exit door and every single door in every classroom. They look for any problems that may, may be an issue. We also get a report from the SROs every year. They go do an analysis through every school, doorways, blinds, everything. So it's not like, you know, nothing's inspected. We have a good team and thank you to building, the building department and the police and fire for all the work they do with us. I just wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Thank you.
No, thank you. I think preventative measures are probably the most important that you can do. We'd rather be proactive than reactive. So thank you.
So just to add, can I add to Mr. Chapdeline's piece? So those security assessments that the SROs, what they're conducting right now, we share those out and eventually me and Mr. Chapdeline will sit down and have a meeting and see what we can actually add to what they go through. Well, it's more cameras, whether it's some doors, blinds or whatever it may be. But we try to put a lot of our energy into the preventative measure along with the training. And one of the things you were saying, talking about, see something, say something. A lot of kids don't talk, they do it through social media. So we do have a social media monitoring system also too. Obviously we won't talk about that in depth, but we do monitor social media to make sure that any type of, you know, legitimate threats or valid threats come through, then we alert the police department and we look into those particular things. But we try to put a lot on the prevention end from our doors to our cameras, to even our visitor identification. When people come to the door, we're taking your hats off, your glasses off and so people can see your faces. And then our SROs, along with our truancy officers, are constantly doing perimeter checks and checking doors throughout the day. So those are a lot of the things that we're doing on the, on the front end and preventative end along to go with the actual drills we do. It's the chief said, the fire chief said that we do fire drills. We're mandated to do at least four fire drills a year with the fire department. The first one being within the first three days of school. Then we actually do another two to three to four fire drills on our own. We probably do at least two to three lockdowns during the year. Then we do some sheltering places and then we have severe weather drills also too. So we probably get in about 10 drills a year, which in our system we call navigate. We do log everything into navigate and we'll probably be doing more tabletop exercises this year also too. So just to add to what everybody has said tonight.
Thank you. Anything else? Again, thank you to our visitors. Thank you for sharing your perspective on how we keep our school district safe. And now we'll move on to our agenda. We have approval of minutes 22-9-1.
Move that the minutes of the regular meeting of the school committee held on August 17, 2022 be approved.
Done. To approve. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Move on to reports 22-9-2.
Report on personnel action. I'd like to recognize a couple of retirements. Diane Rivett, cafeteria helper at Fairview for 18 years, effective date 8/21/2022. Nancy Wegman, library and media technician, Stefanic, 28 years, effective date 9/30/2022. Thank you for your service to the Chicopee Public Schools and their students and their families.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? We'll move on to.
I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry, Sandra, I didn't see you.
All the, the new staff coming on, because we have quite a, a list, are pretty much all of our positions filled?
I would say we're probably in the 90% range. We're still working on it as we speak. We've had some last minute people not show up or just, you know, change jobs.
Okay.
Well, I was happy to hear we went from 65, that was about just over 10 days ago, of new, new teacher orientation up to 80, you had mentioned, correct?
Yeah, 80 new teachers.
And 90% filled, so that's, that's good.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We'll move on to new business 22-9-3.
Move that the bills warrant S0819222 totaling $640,961.26 be approved.
Who are we at? Grace, can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call on the warrant.
I read the warrants, yeah?
Oh, I'm sorry, Chet, could you read the warrants for us?
Absolutely. The first warrant is submitted by our director of budget and finance, John Mirecki. I will read the total of the three warrants that have been submitted.
Thank you.
And subsequent to that, we will respond with a vote towards each warrant individually. The first warrant is for athletics, $30,367. Food services, $26,704. General expenses, $338,431. Grants, $720,594. Maintenance, $302,274. Special education, $89,305. Student activities, $16,964. Telecommunications, $14,170. The total for those three warrants is $1,538,810.
Thank you, Chet. We'll be voting on warrant S081922 for $640,961.26. Any other comments or discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. DePaula?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries 22-9-4.
Move that the bills warrant S082622 totaling $505,569.83 be approved.
Sam, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. DePaula?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries 22-9-5.
Move that the bills warrant S090222 totaling $392,278.51 be approved.
Chet, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. DePaula?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries 22-9-6.
Move that the job discretion for substitute teacher billing assigned be approved.
Doug, can I get a motion?
A motion to approve.
Any discussion? Done.
Yes, I'd like to know what, what our pay is at this point for our substitute teachers. I know there's more than one category, but what's the top category?
I think it's, is it 130 right now? I'm sorry. Yeah, with the, are you looking just for this specific category or the three different that we have?
The, the top category.
Uh, well, that's a long-term sub, so that's somebody that's falling within doing the, the planning and the prep of. That, that's at $175. The building assigned is 150, 14350. And then the day-to-day is 12350.
One of the reasons why I ask is because Worcester just made a big issue about raising their subpay and I think they went up to 115 and they were having a hard time getting subs, but we shouldn't have too much trouble with this.
Currently we have 21 hired in, in the variety of the different categories. Yesterday we were at an 85% fill rate. Today was at an 80% fill rate.
Okay. So we got a ways to go yet.
A little bit. We're still building.
Okay.
Uh, we're much, we're in much better shape this year than we are even pre-COVID with our last typical year with Kelly Services.
Yeah, I know that, I know that it dipped quite a bit near the end there.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
So in that 85% subs, does every building have a building sub?
We're still working on a couple of buildings. We're looking to refresh the posting. Our goal was to have one building assigned sub in all of the elementaries and academy and Zatella and then have three building assigned at the secondary buildings. So there's, there's some one-offs, you know, Bellamy Middle School, we just, we're looking at a second one. I just sent a candidate over to Principal Holt this morning in regards to, to get a second. High and comp are at full capacity. And then there's a couple of elementaries that we're still, still looking on building assigned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments or discussion? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. We'll move on to 22-9-7.
Move that the first reading of face coverings E21 be approved.
Sandra, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the first reading. Any discussion?
No discussion.
Discussion.
No discussion on first reading. So we have a motion to approve. All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries 22-9-8.
Move that the school committee policy file B20 be waived so the second reading of the above referenced policy may be approved due to the urgency of the matter.
Tim.
Motion that the policy be waived.
So we have a motion that policy be waived. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 22-9- Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 22-9-9.
Move that the second reading of face coverings E21 be approved.
Sal, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion is to approve. Any discussion? Anyone? Done.
From what I noticed on this new face covering, in the past, it was required that you wear face coverings. Now it's, you can wear them if you want. And except for in the nurse's office and trainer's room.
Correct.
Or if you're coming back from a COVID, you have to wear them for five days.
Correct.
So that's the big changes. Thank you.
Any other comments about the policy? Sure. Sandra?
This is a recommendation as well from DESI, based on CDC guidelines as well. So that's why the update.
Thank you. It's an important point to mention. Any other discussion or comment?
You're so smart.
All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, could we have a, could we have a roll call on that for policy?
Policy, second reading. We'll take a roll call.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. DePaula?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries 22-9-10.
Increase in MCAS graduation requirements. Topic requested by school commender, member Donald Lamath.
Done?
Yes, this, this came up, but it wasn't on our agenda last time. Mr. Barcel had brought it up during public comments. And I have to, we don't always agree on everything, but I happen to agree with him on this one. I, I do not believe that we should be raising MCAS requirements after the last three years that we've been in. We should get the kids back up to speed before we start pushing them further up the scale. I don't know if a letter to Board of Education is going to do us any good, but I'd like to, to have a vote from this committee that we're not in favor of raising them at this time and send a letter off to Commissioner Riley, just so he knows that we're not in favor. That's really what I brought up. I mean, Superintendent Morton had this report given to us through Sulopes. They're looking to go up 14 and 15 points on English language learners. And those are the students that struggle the most in our system. And we're just going to keep piling on them until we start failing more and more. And I don't, I just don't see that as the right thing to do at this time. So I'd like to take a vote of this board to send a letter off to the commissioner.
So we have a motion to send a letter to the DESI or the Massachusetts Board of Education that is counter to supporting these increases.
Not supporting the increase.
Yeah, counter to.
Right, right.
Any, any comments or discussion? Tim?
You know, back, back when I was in high school, I mean, I, I've always struggled with math and science. And seeing as how those are two of the three MCAS subjects, I mean, I feel I, I need to point out that I only passed those by a few points. I'm looking at some of the raises here. I mean, if, if I were taking this test and I got the same score in a few years, I wouldn't have passed. Right? And this, this is just not good for our community.
Well, thanks for sharing. Ron?
Uh, yes, just a question for Mr. Morton. Mr. Morton, has been, has there been discussions amongst other superintendents and the districts about this? Like, is there any collaboration with the superintendents of the districts to do things similar to what we're going to do, writing a letter or meeting with the, the head of the, of the education department?
Well, MAS, which is the superintendent's association, hasn't put anything out yet. But the Connecticut Valley Roundtable of Superintendents has a meeting on Friday. And Commissioner Riley will be there. And I'm sure this will be a topic of discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, Chuck.
I'd like to address this to the superintendent. How will the city of Chicopee respond to this increase?
I think it's, it's, to me, coming out of COVID, I don't think it's the, the best thing for students. I do, I think it's, I think one of the things we talked about in our convocation was getting students re-acclimated back being in school on a full-time, regular basis. And I think one of the things to keep moving the target is not doing them any type of service from that particular situation. Now, obviously, some of these changes don't kick in until the, you know, these, the freshmen or seniors. But still, I think it's going to take a while. I, I think our students are anywhere from two to three, some, not all. Because some will, will, will actually be, you know, on par regardless of the situation. But a lot of our students are at least two years behind academically. And I think it's going to take long time to, 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 you know, to plug that, that gap. So those gaps that they, you know, they had. Students that already had those learning gaps, from our homeless students to a lot of the refugee students that are coming into our district, have huge gaps to begin with. And now we're actually moving the target again on these particular students, our most vulnerable students to begin with.
Thank you. Well said. Sam was next, and then you, Grace.
Do you happen to know how many kids or students that we have that take the MCAS in prior years that struggle with it, like percentage-wise, that would not pass this test if the increase of the difference was submitted?
Not off the top of my head. I mean, that's something we can look at in the analysis from like what the changes, how many of our students are, you know, would not have passed based on these new requirements that kick in in 2026. We can look into that and see what the percentage would be.
I just, I just don't think it's fair for some students who struggle with tests that they're held to this graduation requirement. So if we can put that maybe in the paper that we send to, to commissioner, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you. All set? Grace?
Um, knowing this was on the agenda, I was trying to do research on the rationale behind this, because I totally disagree with the increase. So I was wondering, you know, what was DESI's thought process as to how this came about and why this would benefit children. And in the time that I spent researching it, I could not find anything of the process. So my, my question is, could you please ask Commissioner Riley when you're at the meeting, like, what was the thought process behind this? Like, was, was there data? Was there evidence to support it? I'm just curious.
I mean, I'll be sure to ask them. But I guess one of the things, I'm just taking a stab in the dark, maybe the fact that the cha, the test is changing to a different, going from the legacy into the next generation. So that may be thinking that there may be, I'm not saying the test will be easier, but it'll, it'll be a different type of test. And maybe the scores are trying to be reflective of what the new test is going to put forward. So maybe that's the thought process. But I'll be sure to ask the commissioner, what is the thought process in actually raising these, these test scores?
You kind of let us, thank you. Let us know. Thanks.
Thank you. Ron?
Yeah, just one more comment. I too did some research along with Grace there. And same, same thing, I found nothing along that. But what I did find, though, is that something interesting is that the national average for the testing in the last couple of years, our test scores have gone down between 4% to 8% on all these scores, due, due to COVID and other things. And so it kind of, like Mr. Lamath said, I think it's kind of ridiculous that they want us to raise the scores when our kids are struggling because of COVID and the other things that have happened. And our, our scores have actually gone down. And I, I know to a lot of people, 4% and 7% may not sound a lot. But as, as us that have been in the classroom and Mr. Morton can attest, just raising a test score 1% is a huge improvement. Never mind 4% and 7%. And now they want to raise this 15% on top of that. So our students are looking at not only 15%, but to gain that 4% and 7% plus the 15% to pass the test. So it makes, kind of seems like a ridiculous thing in my eyes.
So any other comments? Sure, Doug.
Thank you. I would just like to thank, I know Dave Barcel is not here tonight, but I know he noticed the article in the paper. And I'm very happy that he brought this forward. Don, thank you for putting this on the agenda. Certainly, you know, it's imperative that the high school student has their high school diploma to have a chance in the world, you know, to make a living. So this is something that, you know, I'm glad we're talking about it. And, you know, I'm, I'm on your side here about raising these, these test scores. I think after the pandemic, it is, you know, rather fast that we are raising the standards when we really haven't been doing testing. So hopefully, you know, we'll get down to the bottom of this.
Thank you. So the, we have a, I'm sorry, Sandra?
Yeah, I support us not advocating for the rise in test scores. We certainly want our students to succeed. And we need for them to be engaged in the classroom where they haven't been. So this would not be the right time to do an increase in the exams.
So we have a motion to write a letter in opposition to the increase in MCAS graduation requirements. And I think we can also include that our superintendent is, is on board in that letter. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Anyone opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you. That, that concludes our agenda. And now executive session. Sandra?
I move that the school committee adjourn into executive session.
I'm going to pause and apologize. Any new business from school committee members before we go into executive session. Sam Shumsky?
I was wondering if we could ask the truancy officers to come in and give a presentation like Chief Major and Chief Stan Borski did, so they can give the public an opportunity to know what their role is in providing our safety of our students, staff, and teachers. Please.
Duly noted. Anyone else with new business? Now, Sandra, executive session.
Okay, I move that the school committee adjourn into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. And we will not return to the regular order of business.
Any discussion? We'll take a roll call to go into executive session. And we will not be returning to regular business.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamath?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mr. Bernard?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. DePaula?
Yes.
Mrs. Parrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Scofield?
Yes.
10 yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for joining us.
Recording.